Good, everything tested well. And I got a new machine.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Is that like brand new?
Yeah.
Just gotten it?
Yeah, I just got it. Last.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you go through and take it off.
No, no. And I also wanted to record from it once, which I did, so.
Call it tomorrow.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Is that like brand new?
Yeah.
Just gotten it?
Yeah, I just got it. Um, last.
Tuesday?
Oh, okay. Yeah, you go through and take it off.
No, no. And I also wanted to record from it once, which I did, so. We didn't have anyone do their slideshow, but Jesse did move the camera around and follow me to each mic when that was showing up.
Oh.
Because otherwise.
You get another test.
Yeah, today. Because otherwise that would be hard.
It's not like. Oh.
Looks like we're good.
Oh, girl. Why those $300 per se. Oh, yeah. You should name. And like tiny hair.
Well, my.
I was gonna wait for Chatale, but since she wasn't here for the original, oh, there she is. Can I have a motion to adjourn from executive session?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. And we will now have the roll call for the regular meeting.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Petheridge?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Neveling?
Here.
Okay, we will have a pledge of allegiance if you're inclined to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any adjustments necessary? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved and will move to public participation. Anyone wishing to address counsel about items that are not on the agenda, or if they're on the consent agenda, this would be the time to come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and we'll give you five minutes. Okay? And if you have comments on something that is on the agenda, then we will recognize you at that time. So we'll move then to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do any items need to be removed for discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. And we'll move to resolutions. You can read the first one.
A resolution in support of state issue two renewal of the state capital improvement program on the May 6, 2025 statewide ballot.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Okay, this resolution is in support of state issue two renewal of the state capital improvement program. It will appear on the May 6, 2025 statewide ballot. The city of Oxford has benefited from this program by receiving nearly $3.4 million for 13 infrastructure projects. Since 2012, projects included the reconstruction of US 27, the brick streets on High Street and College Avenue, water main projects, bridge and culvert improvements, and traffic signalization projects. So with voter approval of this issue, it will allow the issuance of general obligation bonds by the state for up to $250 million per year over 10 years to fund local infrastructure improvements across the state of Ohio. And it'll create an estimated 35,000 construction job. Issue two relies on existing state revenues and does not raise taxes.
Okay, thank you for that description. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this issue? Okay, thank you very much. Is there any discussion by council?
Just thank you for putting the resolution together.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. We'll move to the second one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application to the Ohio Department of Transportation for funding for the Oxford Area Trail System Phase Six.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And we've got Mike.
Good evening, sir.
Welcome.
Members of council. As you know, tonight we have several items on for the Oaks Trail Phase Five. This particular grant, we're looking forward to Phase Six and trying to get grants for design, planning, and construction. So our request will be in excess of $50,000. So we need a resolution from council to apply for these grants. ODOT has making funding available, federal funding available. And for our size city, there's no local match required for these projects. So there's not a downside to applying for these grants, pardon me. So we would like permission to apply for at least two applications. One would be a planning design grant specifically for the railroad crossing in the vicinity of Mary Day Park, but also for the rest of the loop, including by the Knowles of Oxford property. We're at 70% completion on detailed plans for the Knowles project that would connect the community park and Fairfield Road with Contreras Road. And we would like to complete those detailed construction plans and also apply for a construction grant for that segment.
Okay.
Ask your approval for that tonight.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you very much. Counselors? Discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution is adopted. We'll move to first reading ordinances.
An ordinance to appropriate for public use all title, right, and interest in a certain parcel of property located on or near Oxford Riley Road for the purpose of acquiring permanent and temporary rights of way to construct Oxford Area Trail System Phase Five in the city of Oxford, Ohio.
Okay, and Michael?
So Phase Five, construction of the Oaks Trail involves constructing segments of the trail from Talawanda High School to the middle school, and also a northern connector that will connect to the under-construction of Butler County RTA project, multimodal project, as well as the planned Amtrak station and the city sidewalk system at Chestnut Street. There were 11 parcels involved in our design that we need to acquire easements for. We have acquired nine of those, so there are two that we've not acquired. On February 18th, council passed Resolution 7679, and that was the intent to appropriate property. And this is the next step of the process. We need to pass an ordinance to appropriate the land for needed for the easement. At second reading, we would need six votes of council in the affirmative to pass the measure, to pass the ordinance. At that point, we would file our papers with Butler County Court, as well as we would file the fair market value from the appraisal with Butler County Clerk of Courts. Okay, so this is the next step of the process to acquire the easements needed for these last two parcels.
Okay, and this is the parcel that is nearest 732?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this first reading of Mr. Redpass property?
Oh, no.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to clarify.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to clarify for you. Is there anyone else who would like to address it? Thank you very much. This, any counselor discussion on this?
Well, I guess I would ask Mr. Mazur just to talk a little bit about this because I think those of us on council have not encountered this before. This is a process that transportation projects often involve. And I know that we involved this when we did the expansion of 27 North. But just talking about the legal right of cities, and I was just looking at the Ohio Constitution that talks about private property being inviolate, but subservient to the public welfare. So just for those people in the public who are unfamiliar with this, so what gives a city the right in this circumstance?
Sure, so there is, you know, the ability for a municipality to appropriate land for a public use, essentially. And there's a legal process that a municipality would follow in order to do that. And essentially, that initiative is taken, that legal action is taken when there's no ability to negotiate with the private landowner to do that outside of a appropriation process. So there is, it's a legal proceeding in order to do that. It follows the Ohio Revised Code. And typically, there is a, it is not a, there is a process in which a fair value is assessed as to what the value of that land is. So there is compensation involved based upon appraisals and so forth. So it is, there are requirements. It has to be for public uses and so forth. But that is something that municipalities are able to do for things such as trails, infrastructure, and other public uses and facilities.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions from council? Okay, thank you very much. Can read the second one.
An ordinance to appropriate for public use all right, title, and interest in a certain parcel of property located on or near Gardenia Drive for the purpose of acquiring permanent and temporary rights of way to construct the Oxford Area Trail System Phase Five in the city of Oxford, Ohio.
Okay, thank you very much. Mike?
The details are the same for this parcel as well from the previous, with the exception of the resolution of notice of intent. It was Resolution 7680, passed also on February 18.
Okay.
The other details are the same.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this one? Now's your time. And you have five minutes.
Now you got to break one. This is Mr. Shoker, 5790 Stillwell Beckett Road, Oxford, Ohio. As we, as I spoke last time, we were able to meet as a group this morning and kind of discuss some options. Alternative routes was what I was led in the email to believe that we were going to discuss. We didn't have any alternative routes actually presented. In fact, there were no alternatives presented to us. It was simply, we've designed it. This is what we're going to go with, and you can suck it. So it was very, it was very unsatisfactory. I did compose an email at the end of the day that if we were able to come to an agreement on some of the issues that we have with where this proposed Chestnut Street Connector Trail would be located on our property, and how it would affect our future to develop the property, such as green space, setback requirements, and a particular portion of the street that the trail would cross where Gardenia's right-of-way would be. Answering some questions regarding maintenance and upkeep and on what the trail's going to be so we know what we're going to face as property owners or any property owners in the future would have to deal with. We also opened the discussion as a possibility, you know, if there's one way to resolve this, that is if the city wants to go ahead and acquire that portion of the property, which would be approximately nine acres. I think in order for us to answer some of these questions and some of the items I listed in this email as proposed, to get a resolution before moving forward and jumping to litigation in two weeks, that we tabled this for two weeks and come back to it so that your staff has a chance to evaluate that and respond to it. And I really think this would be a benefit because once we open Pandora's box, litigation, it gets expensive for everybody.
Thank you.
And we really would like to find a resolution that would be beneficial to the community and for us as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shoker. Is there anyone else who'd like to address it? Laura?
Hi, I'm Laura Osborne. I live with him at 5790 Stillwell Beckett Road. And I'm going to do something. He doesn't know I'm going to do it, so he's probably going to be embarrassed. But I am going to unabashedly, unashamedly brag about my husband because he's amazing. People tend to underestimate him because he's big and brown. He has big wild hair and bushy beard. And honestly, I hope you don't mind if I say, he's a little dyslexic, so sometimes he mixes up his letters. And so people often don't recognize how brilliant he is and how accomplished he is. For years, he worked as a consultant for Jobs Ohio, attracting millions of dollars of business to the state of Ohio and worked on projects like this and many times the size of projects like this. He has a background in engineering. He's run an excavation company. He's done developments all over the state of Ohio and also in Oxford. If you want to see some of his stuff, go drive around North Ridge. Go drive around Butler County. One time we had an issue with flooding and our, and a neighbor called and thought it had something to do with us because she saw him out on one of his diggers. And she called the county and he said, "Well, who's your neighbor?" And they said, "It wasn't him." She was really mad because they just, but they said, "Nope, we worked with him on dozens of projects. We know him. He didn't screw up your drainage." He knows a lot of stuff and he's trying to help. If you have conversations with him, you'll quickly realize how bright and capable he is. Once I was, I'm going to tell this story. You don't know what I'm saying. You want me to stop? Too bad. One time he said, "Babe, we have to go see some sports ball thing." And I was, "Okay, I'll go do sports ball," but it was like some kind of business-y thing. And we got there and he, I ended up in a corner with, well, somebody whose name you would recognize, but we started talking. She was a social working type like me. But I overheard some guys back, you know, you know, slapping him on the back and calling him the mastermind, in a good way, not like the evil mastermind in the basement, but like in a good way. And they said, and I said, "Who were those guys?" Well, it was the CEO of Jungle Gyms and the CEO of Graders and the executive director of Jobs Ohio. Like, "He wants to help with this project. I want to help with this project." When I was, first year at Miami, I just turned 18. I was appointed as the student member to the Future of Oxford Committee, which was sort of like the planning committee you guys just did. And President Triver came in, and that was 1987. And we were talking about, literally, I told them about this in our first meeting, the Emerald Beltway around Oxford. That was what Dr. Schreiber's name for the bike trail was. So in other words, I have been involved in the bike trail tangentially project since about 1987. I'm happy that it's happening. But if the plans that we've gotten from the city go through, I will personally, by a huge margin, be the biggest monetary donor to the bike trail by more than double. The biggest individual monetary donor in terms of the money that I will be losing if we were to accept any of these proposals. My last name is not Dollar Boy. So we really want to work together. But what we keep getting is every time you find out about a meeting or even city council talking about your property and you discover no one ever mentioned it to you, that they were going to, you were on the agenda, that weakens trust. Okay, when we can't get the information that we need, it weakens trust. We do not want to have an adversarial relationship on this. But it might go that route. Now, here's the thing. Legally, unfortunately, eminent domain for bike trails has not had good luck in the state of Ohio for the last couple of years. I don't know how much you guys know about what happened in Mahoning County, but it wasn't pretty. It was five years of litigation that went to the state Supreme Court of the state of Ohio and ended up with the city or the county, I think, having to back pay all the legal fees. And the bike trail couldn't go forward, and they had to return the money that had been granted for the bike trail. And that was the end of that. We don't want to see it ending up like this. So it's really incredibly jarring to have people talk about appropriating when your land when you're trying to have a conversation. We don't want to see that happen. Please stop. And listen, listen to us, listen to us, listen. We're going to propose solutions. We have expertise and we're willing. But we need transparency and honesty. Yeah, thank you. Sorry, babe.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to address this? Jessica, do you want to just give a summary of your discussions?
Yes, thank you. I would like to clarify that we very much would like to work with Ms. Osborne and Mr. Shoker. And we've been working with them really since March of last year is when we really first began our outreach. In March of last year, we met and we showed the design to council. And council asked, with a lot of public input, asked us to kind of move it, the route alignment. And in April of '24, we met with both Ms. Osborne and Mr. Shoker to talk about that alignment and get their feedback. And then in June, they asked to see some old, an old, priorly submitted design concept from 2002. And so we shared that with the route alignment on it. And kind of there, though, it started to kind of be like, you know, we had some disagreements. But from August until December of '24, despite repeated outreach, we had no response from either of them. And so Mr. Perry reached out in December, and from December until February, we had a couple of meetings trying to address some of their concerns. I will say at this point, it really is, we are turning in the construction design and ready to go to bid for a contract for construction. And so route alignment is really no longer an option. We need to secure the right-of-way, and then that will take two readings and then 30 days because it's an ordinance. Then we submit it to ODOT for the final review. That'll take a little bit of time. Then we have to advertise it for three weeks because we're receiving federal funds to build this. And then we need to award a contract by June in order to stay in time with our federal grant. And so I will commit and on behalf of the team that we will reach out and work with them over the next two weeks. And I hope we can bring forward a solution by the next reading, but I wanted to share that information. Thank you.
So in a sense, there's a pause because it's between first reading and second reading. And during that time, you can speak with the landowners. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Additionally, our goal is to settle this and settle it fairly. As part of the appropriation process, there will be opportunities for mediation and to settle along the way. As I recall, for both North 27 and South 27, none of those appropriation cases went to trial. They, every single one of those was settled in advance. That is our hope here, but as Jessica said, we have over $3 million in grants that we need to protect and move forward, excuse me, move forward.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel, have any questions or comments? Amber?
Yes, I want to thank Ms. Osborne and Mr. Shoker for coming and speaking tonight. I have a question. Is this considered to be a bike path or a multimodal transportation route?
This is a transportation project connecting significant points of interest to school facilities for Talawanda School District, Butler County RTA multimodal hub, as well as a planned Amtrak station.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, you know, I want to thank all parties involved. Based on the timeline, it looks like there's been communication back and forth for some time. And I, you know, I, there are certain property owners, because of the nature of the alignment, that like this stub, even if in the prior iteration when it was going through Gardenia or that neighborhood, still needed to pass this way. And that's always really difficult because we're talking about people's private property. But in transportation network projects, if you need to connect point A to point B, often there's private property in between point A and point B. I really appreciate the conversations that it seems that the city and Mr. Shoker and Ms. Osborne have had. I'm sorry that there's still some, like, room still to figure out. However, it does sound like we're kind of between a rock and a hard place on the timeline. And a lot of time was spent in the efforts to work together that there's not much time now to talk about things like alignments because technical engineering has been done and we're on a hard deadline. I certainly hope that there can be, as we can see with other agenda items, where people were able to arrive at a, at a fair, agreed-upon price without having to go through this process. But, you know, as I say, with facilities like this, the interstate highway exists in part because difficult choices needed to be made along the way. And I hope that, I personally view that anybody who has development, who intends to potentially develop their sites in the future, as I, it sounds like you guys will, this is an asset that will be paid for by the public that could very well, if designed properly, become asset to whatever that development. Some people have to build these things as part of their subdivisions, and the cost is on them. The cost of this is entirely borne by the taxpayers. And so I hope there's a way where we can find, through mutual interest, that this works. But it sounds like the next two weeks are sometimes for some good conversations, but on a time, you know, limit.
Anyone else? I mean, it's, it's not clear to me exactly what the dispute is ultimately about. That has not been made clear by both of the presentations. However, I do appreciate you coming, and I do appreciate the fact that you will talk with the city and try and resolve it. We have now time before the next, the second reading, and that would be, I guess, a good opportunity. We're not at a point where we can redesign the entire thing. It's just too late for that. And so I hope that you will have a productive conversation and work together. And I hope staff will work together with you and find something that works out before our next meeting. Okay, we'll move on to the third first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an easement agreement with Cobblestone Community Church Incorporated for the purpose of an easement for the construction of the Oxford Area Trail System Phase Five.
Okay, thank you very much. Mike?
This ordinance, along with the next five, represent. This ordinance, along with the next five, uh, represent, uh, agreed to settlements to acquire easements. So this is a good thing. And this merely memorializes the agreements and authorizes the city manager to sign the easements and then they will be codified in our city codified ordinances, uh, in the table of special ordinances, uh, specifically to document easements.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this particular ordinance? Okay, thank you very much. And councilors?
I'm gonna do a thank you for each one of these because I know that this involved significant lengthy conversations with each of, each of these property owners. And so my gratitude goes to the property owners of the Cobblestone Community Church and, but also staff who engaged in those conversations and, and I'm obviously happy that, that this arrives at a kind of voluntary agreement. So thanks for all the work that went into that.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, you may read the fourth one.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an easement agreement with South Farm Development Incorporated for the purpose of an easement for the construction of the Oxford Area Trail System Phase Five.
Okay. Mike?
Nothing additional.
Okay. So we're kind of moving it down. This is South Farm, which is off of Kerr Road. All right.
So yeah, this is my, uh, my gratitude.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so my gratitude to the South Farm Development, Inc., um, again, for the, the time that they took for the land that, that will be, um, transferred as an easement or how you ever describe that. I mean, as I go through each one of these things, I think that there will be reciprocal benefit to each one of these people, that we have churches that will be connected with neighborhoods, we'll have neighborhoods that will be connected with schools. And so, um, while this is one level an imposition on their property, um, I think that these people, I hope that they view this as a, as a mutual benefit to them, but to get to this place, I just appreciate the, the conversations and the hard work.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment or question? Okay, thank you very much. Move to number five.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an easement agreement with South Farm Owners Association Incorporated for the purpose of easements for the construction of the Oxford Area Trail System Phase Five.
Okay, thank you very much. Mike?
Nothing additional.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this particular ordinance? Okay, thank you very much. Counselors, Dave?
Yeah, I'm gonna be a broken record on this one. I guess this is the HOA effectively, or whoever's managing the common property at, at South Farm. And so, you know, I know that even just these conversations must have taken time on people's departmental staff and individuals. And, um, again, I, I hope that this is going to be a mutual benefit to this development and I'm glad it's reached this kind of voluntary resolution.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Let me read the next.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an easement agreement with HPCT Properties Incorporated for the purpose of easements for construction of the Oxford Area Trail System Phase Five.
Okay, Michael?
This one's unique to the fact that they own four parcels that were involved. So all four parcels have been grouped into one ordinance.
Okay.
Other than that, no other changes.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Thank you. Dave?
Okay, but I'll direct what I said to everybody else to HPTC. Is that the name of the, um, HPCT properties and for their collaboration? And again, for all the hard work of the staff, if you read these, a lot has gone into this process of surveying and assessing, um, so thank you to all involved.
Okay, thank you. Let me read the next one.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an easement agreement with Abraham A. and Yulun M. Karunga Family Trust for the purpose of an easement for the construction of the Oxford Area Trail System Phase Five.
Okay, and Mike?
Nothing additional.
Okay, thank you. And is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you.
Ditto to the Abraham A. and Yulun M. Karunga Family Trust. Thank you.
Okay.
I would like to say something as well. Um, I mentioned, I talked about them a little bit at, um, our last meeting, but I, I also want to just point out that these two people are immigrants from Nigeria and from Jamaica who moved to our community and feel the need to pay forward the blessings, which is the word they would use, um, that they received from Oxford. It wasn't easy when they came here many years ago. There were times when people would not have rented to them, but they, um, stayed the course and they made Oxford their home. And I just want to remind our community here, which I know many people in Oxford know, but in the nation as well, that immigrants are part of this country, part of this community, and, um, really give back to the community. And so I really want to personally thank Abraham and Yulun Karunga. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Any other comments?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an easement agreement with CSX Transportation Incorporated for the purpose of an easement for the construction of the Oxford Area Trail System Phase Five.
Thank you very much. Mike?
Nothing further.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay. Counselors?
I don't really need to thank CSX because, you know, with all of these landowners, we're talking about fair market value. So it's appreciation, but there's fair market value assigned to all of these things and CSX wouldn't expect anything less from us, so.
I'm sure they wouldn't. Okay, you may read number nine.
An ordinance repealing Oxford Codified Ordinance Section 12712 entitled Maximum Age for an Original Appointment to the Oxford, or sorry, to the Police Department and adopting new Oxford Codified Ordinance Section 12712 entitled Maximum Age for an Original Appointment to the Police Department as a Police Officer.
Okay, thank you very much. And JJ is here to elucidate.
So the Ohio Revised Code, uh, one twenty-four to twenty-one sets the maximum age to hire a police officer from municipalities at age thirty-five. And that's what, uh, uh, we've been operating under for several years. We can deviate from that revised code if the city passes an ordinance establishing a different age limit. So, um, you know, we had had this adjusted, we, you know, ten years ago and then it went back to thirty-five. But, uh, as police agencies struggle with recruiting, what we've seen is that we've, we've had some good candidates come, some of them retired military who are maybe forty and, uh, they're still looking for a whole career and they show up and they ace the, uh, physical agility test, but they're not eligible under our statute. Um, so this doesn't apply, you know, township police, uh, Butler County Sheriff or Sheriff's Departments in general don't have these age restrictions. So several area communities have, um, changed their age restrictions, notably Hamilton, who did this. I spoke to their chief, asked if it had brought any concerns and it hasn't. And, uh, like I said, other municipalities in the area, uh, either extended them or just eliminated them. So that's what we're trying to do to, uh, to help increase our pool of applicants.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you. Counselors?
I, I just appreciate that, I'd like to think that wisdom comes with age and, and that it's a benefit. I mean, and, and my brother was thirty-five when he entered into the police service and, um, had a lot of leadership skills and as you said, if they're in good physical condition and have the wisdom to go with it, why not? So, yeah.
I think there may be some candidates who have excelled in other communities and really would prefer to be in a small idyllic community like Oxford.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And, and also just to point out, like, this also addresses a candidate who maybe is certified in other, other state, has ten, fifteen years of experience there, but has to go through a certification process in Ohio. And if they were older than thirty-five, then it wouldn't be eligible, uh, under the current ordinance. So that's, that, that would address those things as well.
Exactly.
Do we have any idea why the legislature set such an age once upon a time?
Well, a long time ago, set, I think it was, you know, back then you had, uh, employees who came for a career and, uh, you know, policing is, is for a young man's game in many respects. And so, uh, with the pension systems, I think you wanted to have someone who was healthy and was gonna last for a, a whole career. So I don't, I don't know that for sure, but that's kind of when I came into policing, that was part of it and, uh, but I think the times have changed. I think we're lucky to get five years out of someone now where there's a, kind of that transfer portal of police departments that are competing, uh, with one another. Uh, so I think anything we could do to increase our pool of applicants to choose from, um, I think there's quality candidates out there that are over the age of thirty-five. This will, uh, this will help.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, are we finally to second readings? I believe we are. Please read the first one.
An ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Oxford Codified Ordinances.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Doug?
No, there's no changes. This is basically to, uh, update our codified ordinances. Uh, they've submitted, uh, changes to the city's traffic code and general offenses code to comply with state law. And then this also includes changes that we made to the city ordinances on our own. So no changes in what I presented to you before.
Super, thank you very much. And is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Thanks to all of you who are here. Appreciate it. Is there any discussion by council? Please call the roll.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Snavely?
Yes, this ordinance is adopted. And now you can read the second.
An ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-seven eighty-three supplemental budget ordinance number two to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Hi.
Good evening. Um, there's no changes to this, to the second reading, the supplemental. Again, this is for, to pay the property taxes for the, uh, properties to be acquired with the ARBIT funds and this is using the interest earned off those funds.
Thank you, Heidi. We appreciate it very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you very much. Council, have any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Snavely?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted. And now we will move to announcements and communication. I'll start with city manager Doug Elliott.
Thank you. Uh, Chris Choker mentioned that he had sent an email out at six-thirty, so we haven't had a chance to review it. Uh, we'll review that, staff and I, and, and hopefully we'll, uh, continue meeting with them before the next council meeting and, and possibly resolve the issues here.
I appreciate that they want to resolve it.
Yes, yes. Uh, also, we are planning to close on our, uh, Chestnut Street properties with Habitat for Humanity. As you know, they're projects called Clarence Place and they plan to close, excuse me, they plan to construct thirty-two, uh, townhomes. So our, uh, plan is to have the closing, uh, Thursday and, uh, I'm reviewing the documents now. Uh, also, I wanted to share with you that, uh, as you know, the citizen-initiated statute for recreational marijuana, uh, had a, uh, ten percent excise tax and of that, uh, thirty-six percent was to be returned to host communities. Uh, there was a Senate bill, uh, Senate Bill fifty-six that was sponsored by, uh, Steve Huffman of Tip City and they wanted to make changes in that, uh, uh, distribution. And, uh, I'm happy to say that, uh, they cut that out, uh, of the, uh, bill, uh, but it did make some other changes, but the, the, the fact that, uh, you know, we're still planning to get, uh, uh, thirty-six percent of that ten percent tax. Now, it goes over to the House, uh, but I don't expect them to make changes in it. As you know, last year, the Senate had proposed changes to the citizen-initiated statute and they didn't go anywhere. Uh, the governor has made some changes too. He wants to up the excise tax and, and I'm not sure that there's, that, that makes a lot of sense because, uh, you know, it, there's a ten percent excise tax plus a six and a half percent sales tax, so then it'd be sixteen point five percent. But, uh, the other changes that were made with the Senate Bill fifty-six, uh, it included a public smoking ban, a cap on active dispensaries at three fifty, a reduction of the number of home grow marijuana plants allowed in a residence to six, uh, and elimination of Level Three cultivator license. So we'll see what the House, uh, decides to do on their own and, uh, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Welcome to night.
JJ?
Hi.
Heidi?
I'm all the same.
Okay. Chief Deathridge?
Hi.
Now, the next one, I have to break in before he speaks to say that the city of Oxford is very sorry to lose a very, very talented recreation director. I know the reason why you want to go to Eaton and our loss is their gain. I want you to know that this city appreciates you in more ways than you will ever know.
Thank you.
So thank you for your service.
Thank you. Well, I promise to keep it to less than five minutes.
You can speak longer.
My, uh, my last long walk up to the podium, um, but I do have some things I, I would like to say. To city councilor, to mayor, to city staff and to the community, um, as most of you know now, my final days with Oxford Parks Recreation are coming to a close. My last day here will be March fourteenth. Um, I've accepted a position similar to my current role with the city of Eaton, which is where I live, where my kids go to school, where they play sports and where my, excuse me, where my wife works. It's been home to us since two thousand and eight. But Oxford has been my second home for nearly seventeen years. Uh, my whole career has been in this community. I could not feel more blessed, honored and privileged by the opportunities provided to me here. I feel like this community welcomed me in from day one and I will forever be, forever be grateful for the relationships I've built here. So many amazing people have been instrumental in the success of Parks and Rec these past seventeen years. Talawanda, Miami, Enjoy Oxford, The Chamber, The Rotary, Kowanis, Lyons, The Arts Center, The Foundation, Houston Woods, uh, The Museum Association, the list really just in this town goes on and on and on. I want to be sure I offer some special thank yous this evening, um, and I apologize for anyone that I forget. After so many years, you, uh, it, it's, it's hard to remember everybody, but, um, I want to start by thanking Gail Rare, our previous director. Uh, she gave me my first job here in two thousand and eight, uh, and she was the one who believed in me enough to encourage me to take this position in twenty sixteen, even though I told her I wasn't ready. She said, yes, you are. She pushed me to go for it. Uh, I'm glad I did and of course I want to say, thank city manager Elliott because at that time, uh, he must have seen something too. I want to thank every OPRD employee that I've ever worked with. One amazing person after another comes through that building and they're all crucial to the mission, from preschool, uh, teachers to sports and programs, front ends, even lifeguards and camp leaders and, and everybody. I've learned something from all of them that I'll carry with me to the next place. The culture and the atmosphere has always been the strength of OPRD. People who truly care about making a difference in other people's lives and I can't thank them all enough for buying into the vision and making great things happen. Leaving the people will be the hardest part. To my fellow department heads, always willing to lend a hand, give into my sometimes crazy requests, uh, and jump on board with helping to ensure that we accomplish the primary goal of serving the residents. I'll miss your comments complaining about how, I'll miss your comments complaining about how I get to wear shorts all summer long and how kickball is the most important program we've ever offered. I'll miss, uh, Thursday morning staff meetings and sitting in the back row at city council. No, I won't. To the city councilors the past seventeen years, thank you for believing in me, for supporting OPRD and its mission, for helping ensure the Oxford Aquatic Center became a reality, um, and buying into the importance that Parks and Recreation plays in the quality of life of the community. And to Oxford as a whole, OPRD is only successful because of you. You trust and believe in us to serve your and your family's recreation needs. We appreciate your support and while change can be scary, rest assured, OPRD will continue to do what it's always done and make Oxford a great place to be active and be healthy. And lastly, I'm incredibly thankful to the amount of people that have called and stopped into my office and sent me text messages and emails or just saw me in passing and went out of their way to say good luck, uh, and thank me for my service. I think it says a lot about this town and the character of the people who I think it says a lot about this town and the character of the people who live here and work here. And if any of you have seen the newest program guide that just came out this past weekend, you've maybe already seen this quote, but because it's the first year of bringing back the Oxford Beef Festival, I will leave you with some special words from none other than Winnie the Pooh, who says, "How lucky am I to have something that makes saying goodbye so hard, but it's not actually goodbye, it's see you later." JJ, in twenty years now, I'll be able to come back and work with the Oxford Beef Festival.
All right, good luck, my friend.
Great speech.
Well, Sam, not a hard act to follow.
Just gonna pass.
You're gonna pass to Jessica.
Well, Casey went before me, but my topic tonight is thank you to Casey for your years of service to the city of Oxford. I like to joke and call the Parks and Rec Department the Department of Fun, but it's way more than fun. Recreation leads to quality of life, quality of life leads to where people choose to live, and where people choose to live leads to economic development. And so while, yes, it's the Department of Fun, it is also an economic driver of this community, and I am grateful. I started working with Casey in two thousand twelve at the Visitors Bureau, where he was a colleague who tolerated crazy ideas, and we had a lot of fun together. And then joining him as a coworker in two thousand and nineteen, I could always count on Casey to listen to yet another crazy idea. So we wish him well, and I'm grateful for his commitment to really, he was a community leader, and he was committed to access and equity. He worked hard to get scholarships for those in need, to make sure that recreation was accessible to all. And so I'm grateful for his leadership, I'm grateful for his creativity, and, you know, always being willing to share an idea. So thanks, Casey, and we wish you well.
Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Ben?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Well, I'm just gonna say thanks to Casey, too. I mean, you, you really raised the bar and tough shoes to fill, and thanks for all those late nights and late programs, and I can't think of one that wasn't a success, so best wishes.
I am gonna get to Casey, but I need to, like, rein in my emotions and expect to feel this many feelings. But just a general thank you to staff. I know that this has been, there's been a lot going on and getting easements and moving that process forward. It's a lot of hours, it's a lot of speaking of feelings, there are a lot of feelings involved, and you all are really doing tireless and oftentimes extraordinarily thankless work. So we see you, we thank you, and it just, every time I'm out on the trail, I think about how much work and how many people hours went into that. And speaking of the trail, I was on the trail this morning, and I passed Barkin Park, and I passed Barkin Park the other day, and it was full of people and really happy dogs, and it was great. And that's just one of the many things that Casey has helped. Spearhead in this community, speaking of being totally on board with crazy ideas, I came in and I said, what if we do a half marathon? Okay, wait, maybe we do a five K, ten K. Okay, wait, maybe we also do cemetery tours. And Casey has never said, maybe we tap those brakes. So, and Parks, the Recreation Board was my first board. As a new council member, I was just saying to Casey the other day, it's one that I would always recommend for new council members if we get anybody new in the next election because of Casey's leadership, I mean kindness, and there's no such thing as a stupid question. You're a great asset to this community, and you'll be a great asset to Preble County and Eaton. And I am just gonna pack all of my selfishness away and not be sad that you're leaving, but be excited for them, and I promise I will keep bugging you. And one day, you will run or walk one of our races in town. But just thank you so, so much for your time, your service, and your commitment to Oxford.
A couple of things. Casey, that's so sad. We're definitely gonna miss you. I think the thing I'll miss most about you is the fact that you're always some type of comedic relief. Just from people watching you walk up here, people start laughing, and I don't know, that's no insult to you, but it's like, all right, we're laughing now. And so thank you so much for everything you did for the community. I know we'll all miss you. And to follow up on what was just said about the city staff and the work of city council, that we are really on the front lines at this point. I mean, we're basically, our government is under attack, right? Like, we're just gonna say that. So there's so many things up in the air, and if I mention two things as far as wastewater, right? They're relaxing the ability for municipalities to release sewage into our drinking water is essentially the headline. So that's something that needs to be spoken about of what is happening at our federal level. But I know that I'm not gonna be drinking sewage in Oxford because we won't do that. We are going to make sure that we say no to this crap, literally. And then whenever we see, and I'll just make this like a, because exactly what Amber said, we're all immigrants, whether you came from Europe, came from Asia, doesn't matter. We're all immigrants unless you're an indigenous person. But I think that that, if you're Europe, if you're an American that came from Europe originally, it can be hard to identify with, why should I care about these different things? I know my friends who have very big student loans going through vet school, they are in a panic because the income-based repayment program is gone. It's gone, you can't even on the website to consolidate your loans. And we're talking, some people have half a million dollars in vet school loans. And if you married another vet, that's a million dollars. Your, your loan is going to crush you. So, and that's just the vets that I know. So as we look towards other people who are even less privileged than veterinarians, they're gonna get a lot of benefits that are taken away, but we are the front line. We know we are gonna do whatever we can to protect housing, to protect food access, to protect healthcare. So this is such a critical time that I'm so proud of the members that will be on here to fight for the next four years. And I know people who are, have stepped up to take David Nice's place are gonna be even better than us. So I'm just really proud to be in the community, and we're doing so much important work that I'm just happy to be here.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Amber?
I just want to echo everything that everyone said about Casey. You're a real treasure for this community, and Preble County is lucky to have you. And then the one announcement I have is that on Friday, March fourteenth, we have our third annual municipal art exhibit that will be opening. We're having a reception for that, and it's coinciding with OCAC's second Friday. So if you would come out, please, six-thirty to seven-thirty at the municipal building. And you can hop back and forth between that and OCAC. There'll be some refreshments, you can meet the artists, it'll be a good time. And a special thank you to Jessica and to Ashley for all the work that they've done in helping to keep Paco moving forward.
Thank you. Jason?
Stay strong, keep up the good fight. And Casey, thank you.
So I want to start with one thing and get to Casey and other stuff in a minute. I really appreciate, there was a great meeting this past Wednesday, was it Wednesday? It was kind of been a long week, with McKenna, our zoning and development co-consultants and Preservation Forward, who are working on our preservation, historic preservation plan, had another in the series of meetings towards the development of our unified code and our, and our historic preservation plan. And it was really like it was a small crowd, but it was full of stakeholders. And what I really thought was a really nice balance, that we had a lot of our major property owners there who are, they literally own, they are stakeholders, they own a lot of our properties. And, and it was a really congenial conversation about a lot of shared values. And I think that's, I teach about planning, it's not always just the plan is an outcome, but the process is an outcome. And so the fact that we're having conversations about things that are kind of touchy issues with the development community, I found it really productive, and I'm excited to see what they come up with. I did want to talk about Casey, and I was thinking about, like, there are a lot of ways that people interact with their community, but often those things are kind of hidden, you know? But the Parks Department is one of those things that's kind of like, you get to interact with your city. And as somebody who raised two kids in Oxford, when I moved here, my, my oldest daughter's one and a half, and my second daughter wasn't born yet, they've grown up their whole lives in the city of Oxford. And there are certain things that in Oxford that just make growing up here a really special thing, and our parks are one of those things, you know? The Lane Library in there. And it's not always, we now have a wonderful aquatic center, but it's not always that the facilities are like, maybe what we wish they would be, we aspire, but it's the quality of the experience. I mean, the old tri-pool, even if it was fallen apart, was always a really special place that was run beautifully. Parks Department taught my kids how to swim, you know? They helped with the, maintained the parks where, they did the Halloween parade. My oldest daughter worked up on the tower with the slide. She gave her one of her first employment experiences. And all along, the Parks Department just made it a wonderful place to raise kids and, and grow up. And I would say to that, like, I still feel like I know that people complain about taxes, but I feel like the value that we get from our taxes in Oxford, our property taxes, is super high. And I always felt like the Parks Department really kind of exemplified how much value you get. But I do want to say just the comeback is like, behind the Parks Department are all these other functions that people don't see there. The budgeting to make an aquatic center possible, or the Streets Department that's mowing the grass in the park, or the police, or the fire department, or the, you know? So it's a team effort. Some of the stuff we see, I think a lot about, like, and I'm an infrastructure person, I'm super proud of us are building this trail and moving forward with it, even if it gets kind of, it's difficult as you get towards the end. But it's not just the physical infrastructure. This town has super strong, what we call, social infrastructure. It's like talented people, strong relationships, that even enable us, and I hope this works out with this trail equally, that even when we disagree, we find a way to find coming around and come together. So, yeah, it's a wonderful town to be in. And on a separate note, we'll keep doing what we're doing locally. I think we need to write an ordinance, a resolution in support of our Ukrainian sister city. We cannot substitute for what the federal government does, but kind words of support may matter to them now because they may be very confused and dismayed. So let's work on something until we can communicate. And, and I know you've shared resources. I think people might have to step up to do what they can when our government fails our allies.
Thank you very much. I wanted to make one quick comment about the discussion earlier in the meeting. And I appreciate very much that the Shoker and Osborne duo who came here, I think they were sincere in wanting to work it out, and I believe them when they say that they are in favor of the trail, and I really hope that they're able to work things out. It's, you know, it's unfortunate that sometimes we pass on opportunities to talk about things, and then when it comes right up to it, now we want to talk, and, and sometimes you wait too long. And I hope they haven't waited too long, and I hope that we're able to come to a resolution that works for them. Casey, you know, I started a long time ago with Kay Wrench, who, when Gail was hired, I thought, boy, those are big shoes to fill. I don't know how, I hope you can do it. And she did, and Gail did a fabulous job as our Parks and Recreation Director. And, you know, when she left, you came on, boy, those were big shoes to fill. And you did, and you, you filled them well. As mayor, I get to interact with Casey in a number of different ways. He's probably the only person who could ever have talked me into doing something at the pool to open up.
Did you do it?
I, yes, and I will not do it again. Anyway, Casey, you talked me into it because I respect you. My wife even loves you. I don't know what the deal is. And I, I appreciate Arbor Day, and he organizes all these people to come together for the ceremonial planting of a tree in memory of people who have passed. And you do such a fabulous job with that, and it's very different kind of a thing. But there's a lot of roles that are involved, and the Santa parade, you know? The fake turning on the light, I mean, you orchestrated all of that, and you did it so well. So I appreciate your good nature. And when you walked up and people smiled, that's because they like you. And that's because they know that you're head of the Department of Fun. And so they're already having fun just knowing that, that you're gonna come up here. So we will miss you, my friend, and I wish you the very best. As far as Dubno is concerned, our sister city, I agree with you a hundred percent, and we'll work on that. I think that that is needed. I want to also make people aware that we are starting a fundraising effort to support the people of Dubno, and we hope that we can raise enough money to buy a used ambulance. They need health care for their citizens, and we want to help them in ways that we can. And so, you know, you may not be able to contribute a lot, but whoever's listening, consider donating something to, to help us get as much as we can. And if we can't buy the ambulance, we'll buy solar panels so that they can have heat and air conditioning. We will donate health supplies. And so I hope that you will take time to appreciate our sister city. They're wonderful people, and they care about us, and we care about them. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at eight-thirty-four.